One more moment, one more moment, I just needed to wait. See a little got it. See that got it there. Mr. Long, we're good to go.
Okay, thank you. Select your call the February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two Cituit School Committee meeting to order. In accordance with chapter seventy-one, section thirty-eight and of the Massachusetts general laws. We're holding our public meeting regarding the proposed preliminary FY twenty-two-three school budget. Public comment will be available after the presentation tonight through Zoom. Community members can also email me at M long at dot org or the administration with any questions that they have. So as most of you are aware, on Friday, we had a great conversation regarding the FY twenty-three budget. That was the first time that the school committee as a whole was able to see the entire budget and begin to ask questions. The presentation is on the school website as well as, you know, the video of that meeting is available to the SCTV Facebook page as well as the YouTube page, if you'll go back and view. Tonight, we will have another presentation of the budget from Dr. Dutch and Superintendent Burkett as well as, you know, feedback coming in from any of the staff that are on this meeting tonight. After the presentation, I'll open it up to the committee for any questions or comments that they have, and then we'll have a Q and A with the public. And so I will start the meeting with a roll call vote. Long, yes, Ms. Brandolini?
Yes.
And Dr. Rukuski?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblom?
Yes.
And Mr. Gates?
Yes.
At this time, Superintendent Burkett, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman Long, and good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity tonight for the special meeting to talk about our FY twenty-three budget and how it reflects our values as a school district. I'm going to kind of work with Dr. Dutch tonight and starting this presentation. I'll be rolling the slide deck shortly. I want to welcome our cost center leaders, our principals, central office, department chairs and coordinators, athletic director. Are all here tonight to help us answer any questions that the committee or the public may have. And again, I want to thank them for their hard work and putting this all together. It was a team effort, certainly. So let's start with the first, we'll present this evening, we'll present the slide deck and then we'll open it up for questions. Again, this is a reflection of what Saturday's presentation was. And we'll start with foundations. Our goals this year, and you've, as a committee and the community have hopefully heard, are our two pillars, the culture of collaboration and culture of excellence. You know, I think it's important that a budget is a reflection of your values and goals in the form of financial commitments. So we hope tonight to show where we put our money is what we value. Our budgetary goal this year will be to focus on creating equitable opportunities for all our students and families while providing the highest quality educational experience. This includes, as you'll see, an aggressive four-year plan to remove all barriers that would create inequality in the form of fees. So next slide, please, Dr. Dutch, we'll start off with the culture of excellence. And what I'll do here is I'll summarize some high priorities in the budget that you'll see reflected at a little more granular level as we get into the presentation. But these are reflected in our goals and connected. And so the first pillar we'll talk about is the culture of excellence. Friend that's going between both collaboration and the culture of excellence is personalization. And here it means, you know, the academic excellence, I think, speaks for itself by quality education and opportunities and removal of barriers for all students. And the personal excellence is getting to know students at where they're at and showing and working on growth for all our students as well as our staff and faculty. So what we looked at this year and what we found is an increased investment in the curriculum will be reflected in the FY twenty-three budget that we're presenting this evening in two short years and actually seventeen and a half months. This budget will reflect approximately three times greater increase in a dollar amount than the FY twenty-one budget we inherited and worked with in our first year. We increased it this year and then we look to increase curriculum investments next year. And some quick examples of that are commitment to updating textbooks for our students and staff. Supply line items, we've over-doubled our supply line items to make sure that our staff have the materials they need and to operate at a high level in their classrooms. Also committed to softwares as staff may need that we may need as a district to run our systems. So a professional development for our teachers, including summer work for curriculum writing and assessment. We've committed to that, so that's all kind of bundled in there and we believe will pay dividends. If you count the three hundred thousand dollars approximately that we used in our S R money that's not reflected in this budget, the one-time cost for the implementation of our new literacy program, one that had not existed. So that's an exciting opportunity that we're implementing next year. And I think we've done a good job in putting that through the S R money, so it doesn't show up in this budget, it's a one-time cost, that's what S R is for. So we're allowed to start or implement our new literacy program in the elementary school and have a strong investment in our curriculum. So if you include that money, it's almost four times as much as the FY twenty-one budget in our commitment to curriculum instruction and professional development. Next one, I mentioned in the opening statement, I heard it loud and clear when I was interviewing for this position. You know, that people were fed up with the fees that situat schools have. I call them taxes, I agree completely. I think the goal here, and I said this in my interview and I'm standing by it, is to remove all the fees and taxes from our families and community members that come to our school as a burden. Education should be free, taxes should cover it. So last year, we removed, if you recall, the full-day kindergarten fee for our families with young children coming in. It was, again, these are all related to equity. If you think about it, we shouldn't be having some families pay, some students' families aren't able to pay for kindergarten, it should be free for everyone. We were able to do that over a cost savings for our community and families of over five hundred thousand dollars. This year, with the removal of athletic fees, we have families paying up to nine hundred dollars per student. If you have multiple students, that could get up to eighteen hundred twenty-seven, you know, we have a cap on it, but it's an exorbitant amount of money. And we're committed to eradicating this next year so that all students can play sports for free. That's approximately a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar commitment for our community. So if you add the two together, it's almost a million dollars that we're saving in two quick years, our community, in perpetuity. By smart budgeting and collaboration with the town, we're able to do that. And we'll look at our other fees moving forward in year three and four. And the last one is establishment of a D E I line item, the first ever in the district. As we established the position of D E I director last year, we included a budget this year which would include things like the, this is our house, unifying event that we had this year at all schools. We have love, inclusion and trust teams at all buildings. This would help support supplies for those groups, professional development and also collaboration with town groups. Collaboration piece is exactly what it says, it's working with people. I mentioned the word a couple of times, unity, unifying. As we go through the global pandemic, in the last two years, been extremely challenging for everybody. The goal this year was to collaborate, work with people, earn trust, build bridges, make connections. And so some of the commitments reflected in that in our budget this year for fiscal year twenty-three. Another thing that I heard loud and clear reflected from the community was that the schools take care of their buildings and collaborate with the town to work to make sure the buildings are taken care of. It ties in with number two nicely because we've had a real strong relationship with our, with our town and their boards and the leadership in the town. Support us. So what we wanted to do is show respect for the taxpayers' money and starting a maintenance fund so that we could take care of the buildings that we have and maintain them so that we're not going to the town for capital, we're not going to the town in five years for a new building. We want to take care of what we have, so this is a way of showing that. So last year, we started this as a first-ever maintenance line item, and this year, we're doubling that. Because we believe it's that important. So again, I mentioned the town support. I want to thank the town for their collaboration and support of the last two budgets we have, I'm looking for the same this year. And, you know, working with the select board, the town administrator, finance leadership and as well as the capital planning committee has done a good job working with us and allowing us to get our needs met as far as our building projects are going. The last one is bargaining contracts, all six union contracts are negotiating this year. So we have to account for that in our budget and we want to make sure we work collaboratively with our teachers. Cafeteria workers, custodians, bus drivers and secretarial unions so that we have a fair equitable contract that reflects the hard work and commitment that they dedicate to our students and families every day. I'll turn it over to Dr. Dutch now to go over the forecasting model.
Well, the, the process for providing the school district with their allocation is a little unique in the town of Situate. We don't go to the town and ask for a specific dollar amount, instead, there's a formula that exists and it looks at all of the revenue that's available from the various sources for the town, including state funding. And it then divides that two-thirds to the schools and one-third to the town. And then costs are also taken off of that, and that's why you're seeing the net that's available. Last night, the forecasting committee met and there were some additional revenue that was available and that was added into this budget since we spoke on Saturday during the budget workshop. So that's reflected here as well. It's an additional one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that we've added into this revenue line. And subsequently, we've moved those additional funds into the special education out-of-district expenses just to protect ourselves in the event that there are some additional students that are either identified with special needs or that move into the, into the town that we would become responsible for. So the, the net, net increase for us this year from the town is four point four-four percent. And as Mr. Burkett said, we are appreciative of their willingness to, to share that with us. Back to you, Mr. Burkett.
Thank you, Doc Dutch. So just to share with folks the summary of the process we used to get to this budget. There's many steps over many months, you know, we start looking at this obviously over the summer and then hit it hard for four months leading up to these presentations and just to give an overview. So we start off with looking at our past numbers and we do this line by line. Everything gets scrutinized, discussed, reflected upon, assessed and then updated. So we, we share the prior budget. We share this and requests are then solicited. We do this and it's bottoms-up type of process where the teachers have input at the building's levels through the principals on what they need for supplies, textbooks, anything they need to operate at a high level in their classrooms. The principals do a great job with that. At the same time, the department chairs and coordinators are also doing that, working with their departments on the needs for each department. So those are all collected by the cost center leaders and principals. And then we meet with those leaders and we go over their budget, justifying every line, discussing that, make sure it's connected to the goals and pillars of the district. And that's a pretty intense process that bets out and aligns everything that we're putting forward tonight. Then those, the next part is that we are connected with the school committee, there's a subcommittee. Budget Subcommittee that we share draft with, answer questions, make any edits necessary and keep the finance Subcommittee in communication. We also are working, while this is all happening, with the financial forecast committee, which is a committee made up of town leadership, school leadership. As Dr. Dutch said, to get to that formula, Mr. Gates is on that committee as well. We, we work with our town very closely through several, several meetings to come to the numbers that we're showing with you tonight. So it's a very collaborative and intense process that lasts over several meetings. Now, those meetings will continue as the governor's budget comes out. And last Saturday, we were at the budget workshop where we presented to the school committee the first time and to our community. And tonight, we're at the public hearing phase. Next, we'll have a few more town presentations, will be before the finance and advisory committee next Thursday and the following week, I believe, we're for the select board. And the budget is also voted on by the school committee at the February twenty-eighth meeting. And then if all goes well there, we'll have that as part of the town budget at town meeting to be voted on by the committee. So I, I mentioned, you know, being responsible about our money and being very fiscally responsible. It's, it's a huge ethical value that we all share, such as your public schools. And we want to, you know, part of that is the transparency of our budget. I think people have commented on that several times. You know, we're, we'd be happy to answer any questions tonight, moving forward through the whole process, obviously, with the committee, but community members as well. We want to make sure everything is shared, everybody knows what we're spending our money on, what we value, how it's connected to our goals and how we're achieving them. So just some examples of how we're doing, how we're managing this budget, how we're able to do what we can do with the money we have. Creative staffing solutions is one thing, you know, when we have an opening, how do we fill that, where do we fill it? Most recent example is the, is the nice job by the high school team to come up with a, an idea for the assistant athletic director. We created a leadership position there while also saving the district money. That was a great example. Increased revenue, you know, Dr. Dutch shared that, the, the town again with our formula and the financial forecast. Committee has done a real good job at, you know, allotting us the money we need to run a high-level education for our kids. So I want to, you know, commend them for that. And responsible use of S R and CARES Act money. I think our schools have never been, you know, and that's what, that's coming from outside sources. Last year, when we used the CARES money to, you know, fix our HVAC and your quality systems and other things in the school, we maxed out our CARES Act money. Not every district did that, so I think that was very smart, responsible money so that money doesn't come back and hit us in the finance budgetary line item for us as well as the town capital. So in S R money, I give you the example of the literacy program. We, we were very careful to use one-time cost there. We all, we presented the S R one and two and will be at some point presenting the S R three use of funds as well. You'll see more examples of that where we use that money responsibly. Competitive grants, our team is always looking for grants that we can use to offset the budget and we've been successful in gaining those as well, and those are reflected in the budget this evening. Efficiency of services, you know, it's just how, how we do business. How we, the example of that is spending more money on the curriculum versus other things, starting a new line item for maintenance, putting our money on things we value. And this year, what you'll see is there's no additional staff, you know, looking at our enrollments next year, kind of leveling off. We believe that we have ample staff and so we're always assessing our staff. Last year, we added staff, several positions this year, we didn't believe we needed that to run a high-quality education. So obviously, that reflects cost savings as well.
So as you, as you look at this, this is kind of a snapshot of where the, where the dollars go. The largest portion of our expenses go to regular education at fifty-two point five percent. And then special education after that, it's twenty-six point three percent. So we're well over seventy-five percent of our budget going to direct instruction. You then factor in technology and the ECC program and we're, we're close to eighty percent of our expenditures going to direct instruction. The balance, you've got eight percent at administration and two percent to transportation, one point seven eight percent athletics and then a little over six and a half percent going into maintenance at this point. So this gives you a pretty good representation of where the dollars are going. If you then look at it from a more treetop view, you can see that eighty point five percent of the dollars spent goes to salaries. And then you've got eight point three percent to supplies and materials, other at eight percent, which includes our out-of-district costs for students, transportation and then the, the balanced facilities and operations, which is three point seven percent. If you recall, in the past, we've talked about eighty-four percent approximately of our, of our expenses going to salary. So you've seen, you see that that's come down a little bit. And again, that's, that's part of the commitment to trying to enhance opportunities for students with additional curriculum as well as the abilities for our teachers to utilize materials that are both state-of-the-art and current and meet the requirements of the state's curriculum frameworks. So we're going to jump into the details of each, each line item. This will be a little bit different than the budget workshop presentation. You got a great deal of detail in the budget workshop, almost line item by line item. Here, we look at it by cost center aligned with the state's reporting categories. And things are consolidated here a little bit more than they were in the presentation from Saturday. So we'll start with the school committee's line item. And I'll, what you have for every one of these pages is the FY twenty-one actual expense. The FY twenty-two adopted budget, which is the amount that, that we have available to spend and then the proposed amount in this budget for FY twenty-three. I'll highlight any changes or significant differences, provide you some explanation for those. And then if, at the end, if you want me to come back to anything, I'm certainly happy to come back and explain and provide detail, any, any additional detail. So here you have, school committee membership was not budgeted last year purely as a result of an oversight, partly because we didn't spend any last year in that line, in that line item because of COVID, folks weren't going anyplace. So we weren't as engaged, the school committee wasn't engaged in the M A S C participation, but that, that is primarily the membership that you're seeing there. Next, we'll go to the superintendent's office line item. And here you have the professional salaries within the school district because for FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three, it represents one individual salary whereas in FY twenty-one, it was multiple people in that position. You, you're not seeing the actual dollars. You do see the percent increase that's in that line for FY twenty-three. There's a decrease in office clerical. We had initially every central office clerical position was in that line item. It doesn't belong there, there are opportunities in the state's reporting categories for people to be in the, in the areas where they, they focus. So you'll, you'll see those increases as we move forward and I'll point those out as, as they relate to this so that you have some understanding. School district supplies, simply the, the cost of materials, whether that's paper, anything else that we would use in the, in the business office and superintendent's office, those costs have gone up. And then school district contracted services, you see a significant increase. We, we previously were placing district contracted services like our attendance program, like school spring, which is the application for positions were, were within schools. So we've pulled those out of, at the school level and moved them into the district, at the district level, which is where they belong, which is why you see that increase there. Moving into curriculum. Again, you'll explain some differences here as well, you see a difference in curriculum leaders. There are additional positions that are categorized in this line item for FY twenty-three compared to FY twenty-two. The difference that you're seeing in FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two was that there were even more positions than, than what belonged there that were categorized in this category. So you're, you're seeing that, that true reflection in the FY twenty-three proposed amount. Curriculum development has almost doubled. That's part of the commitment to academic excellence that we've talked about. We, we want to make sure that our curriculum, our curriculum is appropriate, current and meets the state frameworks while preparing students for a post, post-high school opportunity as well as moving along the continuum from elementary school to middle school and then up into our high school. The neck, the rest of those line items are not significant differences from a dollar perspective. While you see a hundred percent increase in memberships and supplies, the true dollar value of those is minimal, so I won't, I won't speak to those at this point. So moving into the business office and human resources. So you have the professional salaries in the business office, the clerical support. Again, you see there, there were no figures for FY twenty-one and twenty-two. Those are positions that are now in this line item that came out of the superintendent's office where you saw that decrease. So that's a part of that here. Within HR supervisory, the same thing. Both the supervisory positions and the clerical positions that are, that are funded in those line items were in the superintendent's line item previously. But they, these folks do payroll and other human resource functions, so they belong in, in this line item. And then legal services, you'll see a twenty-five thousand dollar increase as Mr. Burkett had mentioned. We're negotiating six contracts this year. We anticipate that, that will take a little more resources from our, our legal counsel. So we've increased the budget for that as we, as we move forward. Information technology. Here, again, these are, these are a result of people moving from a teaching line item into the information technology salary positions. And that's why you're seeing a little bit of a difference here. All of the other line items are pretty, pretty static. Curriculum and building leadership, curriculum development, these are your department chairs. So you're seeing a slight increase there. Building level principals, their salaries, assistant principal, the clerical positions at the, at all of the school, at the six schools. You can see those are basically cost of living and step-in lane changes for most of these salary positions. And then you see a reduction in principal contract services. You recall, I mentioned that we were moving things to the central office line and taking responsibility for those. So you're seeing, seeing that come out of, of these line items here, which is why you see that reduction. Instructional staff, so this is, this is the heart of it all. And this is clearly the largest component of our budget. So you see our teacher salaries and you, you see the, the increase from one year to the next for, for the most part. Cost of living, step changes, lane changes that you're seeing, that you're seeing there. Substitute teachers, we've level funded that in the hopes that that continues to, to function for us even with the increase that the school committee voted in the rate of pay for substitutes. Librarian salaries, you can see the, the small change there. And then staff professional salaries, you see a reduction of sixty-eight thousand five- And then staff professional salaries, you see a reduction of sixty eight thousand five hundred dollars. That was also a position that was was here um and has been moved into an administrative line item. It was a a part of an administrator's salary. And and again, doesn't, doesn't belong here in a nondescript line, it belongs in the line where that administrator functions. Instructional supplies, um so I'm gonna zoom in quite a bit here so you can see this, but uh you can see the dollar amounts that are proposed. Um I think the interesting piece is to compare FY twenty three to FY twenty one, and you'll see um some some significant increases. In some cases, there are decreases. Uh part of that is the the need for textbooks, it was very cyclical. Um for example, the science textbooks have gone up by forty five percent from eighteen thousand five hundred to twenty six thousand. Uh those are all for elementary science text. Um so as I said, it's it's very cyclical, but you can see from FY twenty two to FY twenty three, the textbook line is pretty consistent. As you look at uh FY twenty three for supplies, again, you can see that in some cases there are uh significant increases uh as a percentage, but not necessarily as a dollar amount, and in some cases, there are, there are decreases as well. Um I'll use the AV tech. Those, those line items have not been utilized as much, much of what we're doing with AV. Um the audio visuals is is coming through the technology program. And in some cases, our capital uh line item as well. Science supplies, significant increase there. Last year because of COVID, we did not purchase uh hands-on materials for the elementary school. Uh this year, for next year, we are. And so you can see the the significant uh increase as a result of that, so those are just samples of where you're seeing some changes. Uh when we get to the the Q and A, um I'm sure that the uh curriculum folks that are that are on board will be able to answer your specific questions about any, any line items, certainly better than I can. Finally, the last one that I want to mention here um is virtual high school. You can see um there's a four thousand dollar increase there. That's due to an increase in the number of students taking advanced placement courses, uh the the one-off courses that are, that we don't have the numbers of students to offer, we're offering through uh virtual high school instead. Um so that's, that's what you're seeing there. Moving into our special education staff. Uh you have the special education director, the clerical staff there. Uh our out of district coordinator and the ECC coordinator, so you can see uh, you can see what those, those positions themselves. Special ed teachers, again, you can see the uh increase. Um again, mostly uh steps and lanes for these positions and cost of living. Um and then paraprofessionals, again, uh you are seeing a, an increase here of ninety one thousand dollars. Um there are positions that are unfilled, which is uh and and were previously, which is why you're seeing those differences uh between actual, was adopted, and that number's gonna end up being less uh when it becomes an actual. Uh but we are hopeful that we can continue to, to find folks to fill these, these positions. Special education supplies. Um so this is where uh there are some things that uh one of the other reasons that you're seeing some differences, particularly between FY twenty one and twenty two and and even twenty three. And I'll point out the forty five thousand dollars here. Um so this is Orton Gillingham, um for our our students who receive Orton Gillingham. Uh it's a contru-, we've been doing this as a contractual piece, we don't have a staff member responsible, so it's a contracted service. It's always been paid through the special ed grant, and we often weren't including grant-funded positions in our budget. Um what we've done this year is we've included all of our revenue, including grants, and therefore we're including all of our grant-funded positions uh in the budget as well. So while this is not a, is not going to be paid through our local funding, um it is part of our budget because of the grants are part of our budget, so there are a few, few items like that, especially in special education. And you can look at private school tuition, the difference between FY twenty one and FY twenty two. And that's because in FY twenty one, those, those tuitions that were paid for by grants weren't included in the budget. Um they were last year and they are next year, and you can see a reduction. Uh and when we get to the question and answer, I'm sure there'll be a question about that. Um and I'll have uh Dr. Bobear uh explain that for you there, but you see some reductions in our expenses as they relate to special ed. There are others that are, that are increasing, uh transportation, for example. Um last year and and this year, many of our students, because of COVID, were not being transported uh to special education programs, so there was a significant reduction and um we're, we're gonna be overspent in this line this year because one, you know, as as the pandemic began to wind down, more of our students were being transported again. Uh so there will be a shortfall in that line item for this year. Um so hopefully that provides some, some detailed explanation for you, for you there. Student services and staff supplies, so student services, uh and I apologize to our guidance counselor, to our school counselors. Um guidance counseling is still the state uh coded terminology that they use, which is why it's here. Um I understand that they are uh school counselors uh primarily by title. But uh you you can see this, so the the student services includes um anything within uh the counselor's purview. Our school security professional, the um the SRO. And then our nursing services, and uh you'll see that the supplies have gone up. Um our, our services has gone up by sixty one point four percent. That's because we've purchased um something called SNAP, which is an electronic records uh program. Uh trying to manage all of the information related to COVID would be virtually impossible for our nurses if if they didn't, couldn't do it electronically and had to do this manually by hand. So we, we've made that purchase and and we're gonna continue to continue with that. Athletics also falls within student services, uh you can see here um as, as was mentioned previously uh by Mr. Burkehead. You see an increase in the athletic supervisor line item. We've consolidated two, well, three positions, really, we had an administrative assistant, we had the athletic director, and we had a service for for the trainer. Um which was in this line item, well, athletic officials and fees, you see the reduction. That training position is now up in this line item. Um so by combining the athletic trainer and the administrative assistant into an assistant athletic director, we've been able to save, save some money uh in so doing, but more importantly, provide better services for our student athletes. Uh coaching stipends, um again, cost of living increases uh that, and coaches moving from step one to step two or step three. Um we did not have athletic memberships as a category, we've moved that from elsewhere, which is also partly why you're seeing uh the, the big difference here. Um transportation was not budgeted previously. We, so we've added that into the budget for this year. And then supplies and equipment, um costs of everything are going up, obviously, and um we need to make sure that our students have the equipment, the uniforms uh to be able to uh compete. And then student activities. Uh these are the clubs that our students participate in, so the advisor fees you're seeing here. Uh supplies are generally pretty minimal. And then graduation falls within a student activity line item uh in, within the line item as well, so you see that here. Transportation. Again, um this includes bus drivers and then all of the costs associated with uh our buses. Uh our fuel has gone up ten thousand dollars, as as you're aware, the cost of fuel uh has gone up significantly. I think I mentioned Saturday, fortunately, we go out to bid, we get a a set rate uh through the town and um so that we're, we're somewhat protected from what's happening uh with the cost of fuel, at least for now. Lease of buses is a negotiated amount with the town and agreed-upon amount. We are uh leasing all of our buses new next year, so we'll be going out to bid. Uh so that number may not be sufficient and we'll need to revisit it, but for now, we're gonna have to absorb any difference uh in that expense, and you'll, you'll see on the revenue side, this is a revenue amount uh that's the same. Testing, uh we did not budget for testing for our bus drivers. By law, they're required twice a year to be uh drug and alcohol tested. And additionally, we provide, they're, they're required to have a physical every year, and we're required to uh pay for that, we reimburse for that physical. Uh the cost of parts um for our vehicles, our buses are a little bit older right now. Um hopefully, this will be more than sufficient for next year with all the buses. Uh contracted is, is um, excuse me, homeless is uh transporting homeless students. We've decreased this number from last year with in the, with the the hope that it's sufficient, right now, we have no homeless students. So this, this will be uh clearly more than enough, and funds that we'll be able to use for some other shortfall within the transportation line item. Um and then supplies, uh you s- you see that here. Facilities. Um so within facilities, we have our, our folks who take care of the buildings, the custodial salaries, they receive a clothing allowance. Um we have some contractual requirements um for the custodial line item. And then building maintenance salaries, uh there are are some folks that are are not custodians, but fall within building maintenance. Uh supply, building supplies, we did not budget much at all last year, uh mostly because we were receiving uh so much funding through uh the CARES Act. Um we're gonna need this money for next year uh as we move forward. And the same is true for custodial supplies, we underestimated uh when we budgeted, and that was an error uh on my part in in the budgeting process. So this is the number that we're looking to be spending this year, and therefore that's what we budgeted for next year. Um again, you have this experience with your own home, if you heat with gas, uh you know that rate has gone up, so we've budgeted a little bit more for next year. Same is true with uh electrical costs. We didn't, we didn't spend as much last year, so budgeted less for this year. Um partly because we were only in the building part-time, um and we're seeing that that number increase, uh so you, you see that here as well. Uh contracted services, uh I think the one that, one of the ones that jump out is the rubbish. Um it's a contract, it it renews annually, and they've, they've increased their fee to us, so that's where you're seeing that increase there. Um and then when we get down to the preventative maintenance, again, Mr. Burke had mentioned, a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars last year. We've doubled that this year to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make sure that we can uh take care of the building so that we're not looking for uh significant capital improvements to fix uh, fix items. So our totals, uh when you look uh this kind of categorizes it the way it was presented on Saturday. Uh the only line item I want to draw your attention to, it's different from Saturday, is the out-of-district expense, which has gone up to three point, three mi- three million, three hundred and fifty five thousand eighty nine dollars. So the new total is forty six million, three hundred and forty nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty one dollars and seventy five cents. Um these are, everything in yellow is salaries. Uh everything is green, and green is supplies. And then these are, these are unique outliers that are by themselves uh within special education and within athletics. And then finally, our revenue. Um so our town appropriation, you can see, has gone up to forty three million, one hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and seventy two dollars, a one point five million dollar change. Um athletic fees, you see the reduction to minus two, uh two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Our non-resident tuition has increased to two hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. We are bringing in more revenue with that program additionally. The school committee will be voting on the twenty eighth, um as to whether they're going to increase the the tuition for our out of district programs that our students are coming to us. Our circuit breaker uh appropriation is anticipated to go up uh based on what we have received thus far this year. ECC, uh that's remaining consistent, so you can see where we are um at, to this point. We did not include ESER because it is not part of our budget. Uh but we will include it as we do budget updates, so that you can see what's remaining in that line item as time goes. Um the program improvement grant and the ECC improvement grant will not be continued moving forward, so it's not been included in our proposed revenue items. Our gate receipts have gone up already to this point, so they may go up higher than that. Um but as of, as of the development of this budget, this was the number we were at, so we we felt confident budgeting that for next year. Uh the bus lease I mentioned earlier, you can see that from the town. Uh our ridership is down four hundred students, so we've decreased our anticipated revenue uh by twenty thousand dollars in uh transportation. Our Metco line item is static, the number of students uh and the appropriation. Uh we, we don't know if it would be higher or don't anticipate that it would be lower. Uh so I'm pretty comfortable with that number there. Title one uh is federal, federal funds that come to us, and again, um it's, it's based on census data, and that data does not likely change. Title two A has gone up this past year, so we anticipated being up again. Uh IDEA is the special education grant, it's gone up three thousand dollars this year, so we've budgeted that same amount. And then our title four, which is uh programming for the arts, has remained the same. So our bottom line, forty six million, three forty nine, eight fifty one. Uh an increase of one point four million, so a three point two four percent increase in the budget. So that's, that's where the budget stands at this point, uh at this point, uh we'll be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Wong.
All right, thank you, Dr. Dutch, for putting this presentation together, and uh Superintendent Burkehead for, for providing the details behind it. Um what I'll do right now is I'll open up to the committee to see if they have any questions on either what was presented on Saturday or tonight.
Hi, Mike. Um so I don't, I, I feel like I asked every question um on Saturday, but just a few comments, um kind of similar to Saturday as well. Um first, just thanks to Dr. Dutch and Ms. Superintendent Burkehead, I feel like this, this is a very cleaned up budget for us, just in presentation and the way that you've redistributed line items in categories, just makes it more transparent and sort of logical for school committee members, community members, everybody to follow, so um thank you for that improvement. Um I only wrote a couple of things down tonight, so um so, including the ESER money, I think that an approximate four times the expenditures on curriculum um is, it's a, it's fantastic, um you know, as a parent, it's exactly what we wanna see. Um so the literacy program for elementary is not included in this, so that's the ESER separate from that, and then the additional three times approximately spending on curriculum is part of our regular budget, so um that's exactly, um you know, where we wanna see money being spent is curriculum. So, and the building maintenance stuff is also So in the building maintenance stuff is also, again, just fiscally responsible and responsible to our buildings, employees, everybody, just so we're not hitting up for capital expenses, you know, because we're not maintaining buildings that teachers are working in and students are learning in. So, thank you so much. And I guess, like I said, I didn't have any questions tonight, but just wanted to sort of reiterate those thoughts.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, I had a couple of questions that, I think the first one will be straightforward, maybe it's just some clarification. So I noticed in our notebooks that we received, and I'm sorry if you went over this on Saturday, everybody. There's a couple of notes that say curriculum calibration. I was just wondering if someone could speak, maybe even just give me an example, you know, a brief example of what are we talking about when we're saying that? And I see it in math, the ELA six to twelve, again, in world languages, and a couple of other places. So that's my first question.
I think I can answer that if that's okay.
Absolutely, thank you.
Sure. So instead of having a broad, I guess, general summer work, curriculum calibration means the purpose of documenting our district curriculum in Atlas will be to make sure that we have a static, standard district curriculum that everybody can access in one location. That's something that our department chairs are working on very hard right now. Make sure we're starting that process. We have a curriculum acceleration committee that's going to review and vet every single course. So we can start with a baseline and have a curriculum revision cycle. So the first big adoption, as I think several people have mentioned already, would be our elementary reading, ELA, the literacy program. But the work over the summer would be for all departments and teachers, for whoever we can get to partner together to make sure we're all in. We're all in with that preparation. And calibration means, I guess, we're all on the same page. Does that help?
It does, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I understand calibration, I just wanted to hear contextually what you're referring to.
Yeah, it's not a car, it's not a car.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Totally makes sense, I appreciate that. So my other question, and perhaps it's also for you, Mr. Exel or Superintendent Burkhead is, and this is a question that perhaps we'll sort of wrestle with over the next several meetings, so I'm not asking you to finish it tonight. But I keep going back to this idea of academic excellence. And Superintendent Burkhead, in the beginning of your presentation, you kind of said, well, this is evident. We know what academic excellence is. And what I would like to urge us to think about is, I'm not sure that we're all still on the same page around the definition of academic excellence for our schools. And so I think it would be, you know, especially, Mr. Exel, for the example you gave, it'd be really great to do some more work around, what does that mean? And what does it look like in a classroom? And what kinds of calibrations are happening related to the meanings we're applying to academic excellence? Because at the end of the day, we want to be able to have conversations about all this progress we're making or not, right, around academic excellence. And I think, if, at least for me, if I could better connect those dots, it would just be easier to have these kinds of conversations, and I could ask better questions if I understood that. So I don't know if you have a thought on that right now, but obviously, that's a longer conversation for later.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Bukowski, and I agree. We wrestle with that as well, there's no real true definition. I know we presented on it, actually, we took a school committee meeting to present on it, to kind of elaborate. And we're still not fully there yet. I think that might be part of one of the, you know, the survey questions we ask our communities to help us define that. We ask that in our own inner circle as leaders and as educators, but I think also we want the students and families and community involved in that definition as well. So I think that, I agree with you, that's something that we'll continue to navigate as we go. But I also agree that sharing examples of that and how it relates to practice in the classroom is certainly something we'll focus on sharing with the community and the school committee to show things that we're doing well at, things we might need to improve on, and how specifically we're doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, I have just a couple of questions. The sped, the increase, the hundred and forty-five thousand that you spoke of, Dr. Dutch, you said that went into the sped account. Was that the sped line item or that separate account that we're using for emergencies?
The sped line item. The sped account, we would, we could move money to it at the end of the year by turning those funds back to the town. We wouldn't do it through, we wouldn't do it through the budget.
Right. And the SRO, is any a percentage of that or share, do we share the cost of that with the town? In the line item, is that the total cost or?
That's, that's our total cost.
And is that a percentage or is that?
That's not, I don't believe that's that person's total salary, but I, I don't know.
I can comment on that, that is shared with the town, Ms. Limone, that's not the.
So that's our share that we're paying, is that?
That's correct.
Okay, and the, for the transportation line item for the sixty thousand, are you saying that that was, that was not budgeted last year? Is that because of COVID or it just was not, never budgeted?
In athletics, it was never budgeted. We, the transportation for athletics was absorbed within the regular transportation line item previously. But never, when you, when you look at the salaries and the other expenses, there was no allocation for the cost of labor for the trips for athletics. So that's why we've done that now.
Okay. And is, was, at the financial forecast meeting, was the potential increase in the bus lease discussed at all?
It was not. That is an agreement that, I don't, I know it's a long-term agreement. So we would have to go back to the town to try and adjust that moving forward. But without knowing what the total cost will be, it was difficult to do.
Well, I guess more, were they made aware that, just like kind of giving a heads up, that there might be an increase?
They know that we're going out, they know we're going out to lease for all of our buses.
Okay.
I'm assuming that they're aware that it's probably going to be higher than it has been.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Janice, I can just respond a little bit more on that, on the bus lease. As Dr. Dutch said, actually, part of my comments really kind of a little bit different direction is that this financial forecast, and I say this every year, I believe it's one of the most important committees in the entire town. And as Superintendent Burkhead and Dr. Dutch said, there is a formula, and the formula is basically all of the town's revenues minus the expenses, we share two-thirds of the expenses, we get two-thirds of the revenue. So one of the benefits to the school district has simply been all this new building in town. As we get more homes and hire, I guess, basically, new, new, new homes, new developments, so we get basically increased dollars for everyone that is, you know, that's taxed, and that ultimately benefits us. So again, I just reiterate, that's a very important committee, and we meet, probably begin to meet in September, October with some preliminary numbers. And then ultimately, as Superintendent Burkhead and Dr. Dutch said, we met as recently as last night with the updated numbers. So it's a great committee, it's very insightful and an important part of our budget. Relative to the bus leases, something we did a couple of years ago, I think maybe three, maybe three years ago, we finally did get the town to agree to put that as what we call a shared expense. But we did negotiate that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar number. If I remember correctly, that, I think it's going to be difficult to renegotiate a higher number. I think it's going to be two-fifty, and anything different will probably have to absorb. But it will be interesting to see what the new lease rates are. Obviously, I don't know how they, with interest rates higher, they should probably be higher. And also, just the cost of cars is, so it's going to have some relevance to the cost of the lease. So I would expect, as Dr. Dutch said, that we'll have a higher lease. But I have, I have a hard time figuring that the town will, will increase that line item to us. But I just, I just wanted to thank Superintendent Burkhead and Dr. Dutch. I mean, this is the transparency that we had seeked in years past, and I think that it's very clear where money is intended to be spent. I don't have any questions, I was part of the budget subcommittee, so I have seen this one or two times prior to Saturday. So I'm somewhat intimate with it, but I don't really have any questions. I think that the money appears to be being spent in the places that we need it most. And looking forward to the school committee approving it and the town as well. So thank you.
Mike, can I ask a follow-up to one of Carrie's questions?
Yeah.
Thanks. So just where Carrie was going with her desire to see more sort of quantifying of, you know, curriculum and how it's serving students. I had a kind of precursor question to that, which involves a budget in terms of the reading line item. So the new program for literacy for K to five not being a part of that, but seeing the huge increase in the line item tonight in reading, could maybe, I don't know if this is a reading specialist question, a curriculum coordinator, or districtal question, but looking to see what specifically was purchased and what materials, whether it's subscriptions and/or physical materials, were purchased through that three-times increase budget in curriculum that the students will be seeing roll out in 2023.
I can comment on that. So last year, we purchased foundations, which is just the phonics piece of a curriculum. And what will be purchased next year, and I want to say it's a little over three-hundred thousand dollars, that's the plan right now, would be for soup to nuts, the whole, every piece that a teacher would need in all four elementary schools to implement a full curriculum, the digital text, the hard copy, if there are, if there's consumables that go with it. We actually, right now, are piloting.
That was my next question.
Yeah, we're not just buying stuff. We're right, currently, Megan can talk better to what I want to say. It was a training today to introduce the teachers who have so wonderfully volunteered to pilot these at every single building. So we are starting the process. So it is not something where we're just going to purchase, we need some books, so we get some books. It's actually pretty in-depth, and I'm not sure we've had a pilot of this scale in a while. But Megan, not to push him on this, but if you'd like to share a little bit of what those wonderful teachers are doing?
Sure, thank you. So just today, we have three programs that have been vetted through Curate, through Desi's portal for looking at high-quality instructional materials. We're looking at three of them, and teachers were trained today. We have twelve classroom teachers who are piloting. And in each of those classrooms, there is a special educator or a literacy specialist working with each classroom teacher to help implement one unit of each of these programs and give us feedback about, you know, how students are doing with it. Ease of use, and we've created a rubric of our needs in Situate. We've looked at the rubrics of the needs of the state that Curate has come out with, and we've kind of talked about what we're looking for in Situate in terms of what our kids need. So we'll be starting those pilots after vacation. The units go anywhere from five to nine weeks. And so during that entire time, we'll be collecting data. And then at the end of that time, we'll be kind of looking at the outcomes for kids and then seeing teacher input, which will be really valuable.
Thanks, Megan, Anne Hity. I think that was more, I hope, Carrie, like, when you're thinking about quantifying and looking at data and is this what, is this good? Is this a good direction? Are these programs working? Are they helping kids? What are we seeing? Were our good choices being made that are what we need and want and what the kids need? I think that's the data we're looking for in terms of, you know, seeing outcomes. And then obviously, you know, down the line, it only reflects in grades and additional data that, you know, across the state, MCAST, everything.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's right, Nicole. I guess I would just add that it doesn't necessarily even have to be quantitative, it could be qualitative, right? Notes and narratives that we read from English classes, from math classes, whatever. So just to be clear that it doesn't have to be quantitative. I think what I'm really getting at, Nicole and others, is I so appreciate that our community is invested, as we all are, in student success. And we have worries around rankings, we have worries around MCAST scores. And so I think in order for us to have those rich conversations together, we have to come to some understanding as a community, you know, towns, schools, of what academic success means for us. Because I just think we can't have those conversations if we aren't talking about the same definition of academic excellence. So even, I mean, I've been digging in, this is a side thing, but I've been digging into the rankings. And it's, if anybody has time, go to the website for US News and look at the criteria for rankings. I mean, it's wild, like, what things are included, right? And so I think we need to know that and decide as a community, are these criteria that we want to use to measure academic excellence, right? But those are the kinds of questions. So that was a long answer, Nicole, but yeah, I think, I think we're getting there.
I completely concur, and, you know, with double down on that academic success might look, it's such a hard, you've got your kind of umbrella of, as a district, and then you've got your kind of fine-tuned definition of academics, success looks different for each child and family too. So it's so multi-layered, but certainly, I agree that it's the, it's what we wanted to know about, the main kind of the meat and potatoes here. So, agreed.
Thank you, boss. And Dr. Dutch, I just had one question for you on what you presented tonight. So you had a line item of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for maintenance for next year. Do we have a list of items that are already in that line item that we look to complete? Or what'll be the process to put items in against that line item?
They would be, they would be identified by our custodians and by our assistant facilities director, Mr. Dylan. They, most of them fall within the HVAC category. But we've got, got other items that, you know, for example, a roof at Jenkins that, that may need some repair but not replacement because it's not old enough. That might, might be the sort of thing that falls into that preventative line, maintenance line item. Something to keep that component going until we can get to the point of replacing it through state-approved financing and SBA. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
I was just seeing no other questions in the committee. It is fine, time will have the public comment, or people can make a comment that they have on the budget or ask any questions that they have. And Superintendent Burkhead, as those come in, I'll have you direct them to the appropriate person in this meeting to answer. Anything we don't have an answer for, you know, we'll make sure we get an answer out there. I know we've talked about having a FAQ list for the public to be able to go back to as we go through these meetings. And this is a topic that's going to be done over the course of really the next several months. So, you know, this doesn't end here. We'll continue to make sure the public at least has that information at their fingertips as opposed to needing to go back and review a, try to find that section of a school committee meeting. And as people get unmuted, if they can just either state their, their name and either their address or school affiliation, for the record, that would be appreciated. So the first person is Jennifer O'Neil.
Good evening, thank you, everyone. And this is for you, Jeanne, Jennifer O'Neil, Gannett Road, because I think I forgot that the last time. So I have a couple of comments and then a few questions on some of the line items. And first comment I have is, Peter is absolutely right, and he's probably going to follow up his chair that I just said those words. But the financial forecast meeting, I went to one during the session, and it was very eye-opening to see how, how the money is allocated through the town. So I think that for anybody who wants to know where the money comes from, how it's allocated out, definitely try to get to one of those meetings because it certainly is very eye-opening. The other thing I wanted to state was, and I think I saw him on here, but A.D. Payne, I had a question on Saturday, and he reached out to me, and he answered the question. I had a question on Saturday and he reached out to me and he answered the question that I had. And I was very happy with the answer that I got on that. So as the mom of a former female athlete, I was very happy to hear that some of the funding is coming in for some of the girls sports. So I was really happy about that. So in terms of my questions, I'm going to try to do them easiest to hardest. So hopefully that is, is very helpful. But I noticed on one of the line items, this is probably for Dr. Dutch. It was in the contract services other, there was 100% increase. And is that because we're moving some things from maybe one part of the budget to the other part of the budget as to why we're increasing that line item by so much? And also what's other?
Can you tell me which?
It was towards the end, I think it was all the contract services, like rubbish and.
Okay. So contract, let me just grab, get to my spreadsheet. So contract services, other, let me try to think what, what might fall into that category. It's, it's really any of the contract services that we're not seeing here. Off the top of my head, it's not, it's not coming to mind. What I'll, what I'll do is I will dig into things that have been paid out of that line account.
Because it just looks like such a large increase for something just that was just other. And I was just wondering if it was because some services from, say, the elementary schools that you said were moved to other areas of the budget may have been moved in there.
No, I, I'm, I'm pretty certain it's because there are items that we underestimated our expenses. I want to get to the actual items.
All right. So that's my first question. My next question, I'm just, I'll finish up this page and I'll flip to my next one. On the Metco grant, we're not doing any changes to the Metco grant. And I guess my question, and this could have possibly be, I'm not even sure if this is something that should be answered in a budget meeting or not. Is the grant based on the number of students, Boston students in the program? And as the students graduate out or possibly leave the program, are we then backfilling those spots? Or does this amount of money fluctuate year to, like within the year?
The, the dollar amount fluctuates year to year based on the number of students that are enrolled.
Okay.
With some exceptions to that. There's, there's somewhat of a hold harmless application until there's a true trend of seeing a reduction. And to answer the second part of your question, there, there is a plan in place to backfill students as, as students graduate from the program. One of the things that as, as we go through the process of hiring a new Metco director is to, to look at the plan for that. Does it all happen through kindergarten and first grade? Or do we do it across grades to, to try and bring folks in as students graduate? And that's, that's a philosophical decision that they need to make.
After sitting on that committee, I think, yeah, there's definitely a lot of discussions around that program, which is absolutely wonderful. So I just want to make sure that we're not underfunding in any way. But since it's a grant, I believe, I guess there's really nothing we can do. And it's based on first student. So that's in answer to that question. Going down my list, Janice already asked about the SRO, so I'm able to check that one off. I noticed in virtual high school, it was really high in 21. And I know that it's going to be up again in 23. But why, I'm assuming 21 was because of COVID and so many students that did have to utilize it. But if we're offering so many more courses, why are we not increasing it up to the level that it was in, say, 21? That might be at least a question.
Yeah. I'll let Lisa approach it first and then I'll clarify.
We use two programs through that line, Edgenuity and Virtual High School. Through COVID, we moved from a per pay student to a larger subscription, if you will, so that we have more access to more seats there. So the cost had, the, the cost initially is a bit higher for us, but we have, we have wider access through that.
So you think that the 20, because I, I was concerned that the 22, I think it was listed as 22,000 line item wasn't going to be enough. I, I thought it should be higher, but.
I think it will suffice.
All right. I, I, I know you're the expert. I just want to make sure that we're, that we're covering that. Okay, so that's that one there. To, this is, this is to STEM and this is based on the Saturday presentation. I was going through it and I noticed that there are line items for art, phys ed, music, all the specials, but I didn't see one for STEM. Now, is STEM considered a special at the elementary schools? And should there be a line item for that? Or is that included somewhere else in the budget? And I don't know if that's a Heidi, a Bill, I don't know who that, that would be a question for.
There are line items for STEM within, within the budget, both in the supplies and also within textbooks. And you should have seen that on, on Saturday as well, on the curriculum side.
Okay. All right, I'll go, I'll go back. I just, I think I might've just been looking for, like it said, art supplies, phys ed supplies, music supplies. I just didn't see anything that said STEM, but maybe I'm just.
Yeah, it wouldn't say STEM. It'll say science supplies, math supplies. It'll, it'll delineate even the engineering technology programs at the middle school are separated out.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure that, because I mean, that's such a big thing. I just wanted to make sure. And now to my hardest question, which Dr. Dutch, you alluded to, somebody would be asking during the presentation. And it goes to the special education out of district. On Saturday, it was mentioned that the reason our private school out of district was reduced by such a large amount was because we had found out that we had out of district students, out, paying for students out of, to out of district schools that no longer resided in Situate. And that's why we had to reduce it. Now you're saying that we're now going to increase it by $145,000 with that extra money that we got. Is there a reason that we are deciding to do that? And then the second part of the question is, how, I mean, how do we know, obviously, when a student moves out, that we're no longer paying for that? Not just in special ed, but in our regular education in our, in all of our classrooms? I mean, they're, I was thinking back, I only once had to prove residency for my children when I registered them for Situate Public Schools. For them, it was in kindergarten. For others, it might be when they move into town. But you could move out of town and not tell anybody and still send your kids here and then we're paying for them. So how do we, number one, make sure that doesn't happen again? And how are we sort of saying that we should put this additional $145,000 that the town is giving us into the out of district private schools? When we were told on Saturday that we were paying all this money out that shouldn't have been paid out? And I'm not blaming anybody for like paying it. Obviously, we found out through some type of audit, but it just seems, it, it just, I don't know. I guess I'm disagreeing in this public hearing with spending that additional money for that line item when we had such an issue with it. So you also mentioned there was a grant somehow with that. So I don't know who wants to explain that, but that's all of my questions. So I'll just sort of leave it at that. If somebody can explain the special ed out of district line item, how we got from what we were paying to, you know, what we're paying, you know, now versus now this $145,000. And also if anyone, I don't know if it's Mr. Burkhead or anyone can sort of answer the question of, how do we know that the students in our schools are Situate residents and should be in our schools? Because if we're paying, you know, whatever it is, a $13,000, $14,000 per pupil expenditure, and, and there are, you know, one, two, three students that are not supposed to be in our schools, that's a lot of money. And I, I just want to make sure that, you know, we have some type of safeguards in place. And I'm sure it's not just Situate that has this issue with that as well. I'm sure there are plenty of other places that have that issue, but it just, it kind of boggled my mind when she, you know, Dr. Bobart made that comment that we had paid all this money out for somebody who didn't live in Situate. And as a taxpayer in Situate, I wasn't very happy to hear that. So, but other than that, that's it. Thanks.
So I'll, I'll answer those, the first, the special ed question first and then ask for Dr. Bobert to provide any clarification. So in, in the, first of all, the, the, the students that were identified not to live in the district any longer came about as, and receiving special ed services for out of district placements. We were able to discover that through an internal audit that was done by Dr. Bobert. And kudos to her for, for identifying that. That really just, just takes diligence and staying on top of who's where and, and keeping track of, you know, are they, are they going to those facilities and do they live in our, our community? The second part of your question is it relates to special ed. So as, as Mr. Burkhead mentioned, we asked for detailed information from each class center chair to provide us detail. Dr. Bobert provided detail based on who's currently enrolled in out of district programming, who would be graduating out of those programs or, or coming out of the programs for, for a variety of reasons. And she then provided me with a, a dollar amount estimate as to what those costs would be. With a, a small cushion, I put that number into the budget. What we often find happening is, and the reason that we've asked the town and have been granted the special ed stabilization fund is for those cases that have happened apparently quite a bit in Situate, students move in. We didn't anticipate them. And if it's a significant residential placement, it could cost us $150,000 to $300,000 for a student. So, so when getting this additional, these additional funds, we felt it best to simply put those funds where there may be a need. If we get to April or May of next year and we find that's not the case, then we may be able to use those funds in some other way within special education or even for capital improvement if the school committee chooses to, to reallocate those funds.
So it doesn't have to then be put into the stabilization fund for further use?
It does not. There is no, there is no rule established when the fund was established that dictates how that fun, how that's funded. You would get different perspectives from different people on, on how that would be funded. Fortunately, this year, the, the select board in the town recommended that it be funded out of free cash, some additional funds that were available. Actually, it wasn't before it went to free cash. It was surplus funds that they had. And I'm hopeful that that's how it continues. But obviously, if we have money left over that we're going to turn back to the town at the end of, at, on June 30th, certainly that money should go into that stabilization fund in, instead of the general fund for the whole town. Okay?
Okay, that definitely answers, that definitely answers the question. I was just, like I said, it was, and then, and thank you to Dr. Bobart for, for finding that because who knows how long. And I guess my question too, on Saturday was, are we then able to go back to, I guess, the town that should have been paying and get any reimbursement from them?
We did get some reimbursement from one town for a student who had, who had been, we've been paying for. Michelle, I don't know if you want to respond to the.
I'd love to answer the most difficult question so far. So I started in August 2020 and, you know, our fiscal years go, started July 1st. And when I started the previous, at that point, we had 47 students that were projected to be out of district. Then, or were out of district the, the previous year. Then last year it dropped to 42 and then next year 31 plus, you know, possibly plus another five students. So what I meant to say on Saturday, and I'm sorry if I didn't explain it right, is that we, we, basically the numbers have been reduced, not only because some students have graduated or, you know, transitioned successfully back to our schools, which is also always a wonderful thing. But we, I did find, like the month after I started, that there were two students that were being billed to us, but did not live in our town. So there is something called the move in law and it's very complicated. But basically, if they, it depends on the student's placement. If they're in a private school and they move to Situate or let's say they're in Situate and they move to a different district. If they move before April, okay, then we're off the hook as of July. So we still pay from April through July. If they move after April, we own them not only for that period from April through July, but we own them for the whole next year. That's the law. Yes, that's it. That's all.
So that, that's something we have to talk to the state house about then. Okay.
Well, but like you said, all like there's families that move. And so like sometimes we might have a family that moves out and it benefits us. And other times we have a family that moves in and then we pay. So it is what it is. If it's a collaborative or a public school program, the move in law does not apply. So the date that that student comes in, if this student lives in our town, then, you know, we fund them. If they move to another town and we can prove residency, then we ask the other town. And then if the other town doesn't, like I talked to the special ed director, if they don't cooperate or they disagree, there's something called an LEA assignment request. So we, so what happened when I came in, we did a few of those LEA assignments and then we let the state determine who's responsible. Because not only does it depend if it's a private school or a collaborative school, it also depends, is the student homeless? Is the student in foster home or a group home? And where was the parent last living? So it gets, it's not that easy, like as you would think. So it gets complicated. But how we keep, keep track is number one, you know, keeping in touch with our families and with our schools. But also when we arrange transportation, we would know, oh, wait a minute, the bus is now going to a different town. So we, we try to keep, we, we do try to keep track of that. So that kind of hopefully explains that piece of it.
Yeah, that, that clears it, that clears it up a lot more than, yeah, so.
But I, I try to go after what I can in terms of her money and for making sure that our kids are taken care of. And in those instances where it was deemed not our responsibility, it was deemed the other towns. We didn't get that ruling from the state for several months, but the town did. We, we worked with the, the other schools to bill the other town so that we were not responsible as of the decision like July 1st. So I, I feel comfortable that, that we're handling that piece okay because we do feel a responsibility to the taxpayers. And the laws are not that the student wouldn't get their out of district program. It's just somebody else has to pay for it.
Okay. No, that, that, that clears it up a lot. So thank you for that explanation. But then I guess that, that would go to maybe to Mr. Burkhead. How do we do that for, for all of our other students? How do we, other than when they register for school that very first day? How do we keep tabs on residencies?
Yeah, it, it's a good question, Ms. O'Neill. There's no sides doing what we do in, in kindergarten and having every year a registration, which would be very challenging on our resource. I think what we do is we have, it's, it's mostly the honor system where parents are asked to, you know, share their address and things like that. But what we find also, you know, so we're, we'd be looking for a system implement to do that if we could do it efficiently. But the principals know their students, the counselors know their students word of mouth. Kids talk, teachers talk, parents talk. We, we have a really good handle. I mean, we've cut it down to, you know, I'll get a call where a principal, it says, oh, through a counselor or something, we found out this parent's not living in district anymore. We work at their, our families like that. So I think although we don't have a, a perfect system in place, I think.
Right.
We have a real good handle on, on knowing our community and working with those parents that may do that. And challenge that separately on the special education side.
All right. Well, then I, I feel, I feel confident then that we're not educating hundreds of out of district students in Situate Public Schools. And I was, Dr. Bobart's explanation was, was spot on. So thank you so much for that. Maybe should have sent an email versus, but I, I'm glad that we did that. And I think that is for all of my, that's all my questions. So I will let others talk about budgets.
And Ms. O'Neal, while you were talking, or one of your questions was getting answered. I did find, at least on the K to five side, 22,500803 that was being put into STEM.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Everything we had in our bucket, in our backup, but, you know, we can look through that further and get you an answer. But.
Yeah, and I was, I think. Yeah, and Dr. Dutch had said it's not listed as STEM, which I think is what I was looking for versus science and different things like that. So I was, I was comfortable with that answer. And, and again, like I, like I said in the very beginning, financial forecast meeting, if anyone can go, definitely go to it because it's, it's very interesting where a lot of our money goes, not just in the school side, but the other side of town as well. So thank you, go. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Sorry, I know it's public comment, but I just wanted to support Dr. Bobert and Superintendent Burkhead and Jen, your questions and everything, it's totally valid. And that's totally, I mean, I maybe chuckle a little inside because literally today I'm thinking with a colleague that, you know, part of our jobs as counselors is kind of detective work. part of our jobs as counselors is kind of detective work and like figuring these things out. So it's like, it is true, like it's not just Situate, you know? Every district, it's always like day to day, kids move, like things are fluid in families and then it's complicated. People live with family and relatives and, you know, what's the child's home address? So it's definitely a, you know, complicated and ever changing. Um, you know, special ed is, is tough work, but uh, good questions to ask and, and good job to uh Michelle Boebert and her team for staying on top of that.
Uh, the next person is uh Michael Wester.
Hey, it's Mike West, North 44 Amy's Way, Situate Mass. This is my first time seeing the budgets. Why I will hold my budget questions until next week uh for advisory. But I do just have a couple of questions. The other town budgets throw the, show the three previous years. So you can kind of see what's a trend and what's an outlier with the different line items. I think that would make it easier because obviously with COVID, it's, you know, was this COVID? Was it not? Is this tracking this way? Um, it would help, I think, the public just, you know, with a more, a longer term history rather than just like one year or two years previous. Um, the second thing is last year's presentation, I believe we had uh slides that showed the number of students in, in the schools um with documents like, okay, the number of students in the regular school, we averaged fourteen thousand per student relative. And then it based it on the other towns to see where our spending money's going. Um, I think that was, was helpful. And I mean, like last year, I think it illuminated that we spent like twice as much as Duxbury on did on special ed and we had like the same amount of kids. Um, so this year it looks like especially the kids are going down, but our budget's not decreasing. Can we get that information included in the presentations? Because you're talking overall budget numbers, but you're not looking at who it's affecting and how many people it's affecting. I think that would help out. And just to see where we are relative to our neighbors, because I mean that, I know nobody wants to do it that way. And you know, nobody likes to all the testing mechanisms and everything else or like that we drop down, but that would help gauge in, you know, see where we are. Maybe we are in line or maybe on the line. Um, that's just a couple of comments that I think would make everything easier. Um, then the rest, I'll ask the budget questions next week. Oh, that one last question. Are the previous years online as well? Presentations?
I know they had done, I'm not sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Wong.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know we posted these on the, the website before. Um, we can go back and see if they're out there. And if not, we can make sure that other presentations are on the website.
Yeah, because I, I would just wonder, what, just what was the reason for cutting some of the stuff out from previous years? Just it was a decision this year in doing the budget or was there a thought process behind it or it just happened or I don't know?
I can handle that. Thank you, Mr. West. I think they're all good points and I do recall having that in there and that actually Dr. Dutch and I spoke about that today about the enrollment in the comparisons. Um, you know, I think that was our focus last year and some of our goals aligned to that. Where we're focusing more this year on maintenance and other things, we didn't include that, but I think it's a, a very good recommendation. I think it's something that would be helpful. I agree with you. So um, thanks for that feedback. And I think that would be something we certainly can include in future budget presentations. And it's good to hear that it's valuable for people to see that comparison as well. We can certainly do that.
And just in response to the comment regarding three years of, of history um as far as the budget. One of the reasons, it was a conscious decision not to include it. And one of the reasons is it didn't, didn't provide us a lot of information because of the, the changes in categorizing staff um and not including uh grant funded positions into the budget. So it really, um, you were, you were looking at a, a previous method of um, representing the budget. So it really didn't, didn't show us what, well, anything that was beneficial uh moving forward as, not as much as the previous year, two years uh information did.
But so in that realm, I mean, every time we get a new accountant, they change things, they move line items and stuff like that. Does that mean going forward, you plan on doing it with the past history?
Yes.
Like you're comfortable with way it's organized now. I get it. You don't want to be compared to somebody else's way of accounting for things. You want to clean it up yourself, but can they go forward? We can look to see that?
Yes, you can. Um, additionally, what I'm trying to do is cross train people within our office so that uh when there are transitions um in this role, some, there, there's folks who have a history of how it was done instead of it being housed with one person.
Okay. And then, yeah, Mike, if you could just get back to me on the last three budgets that presentations, that would be great.
Yep. Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look and I can't find them. I'll, I'll return to the Dr. Dutch to get them. Okay. Seeing no other hands raised. Um, oh, and public comment. Um, is there anything else in the committee that they wanted to bring up tonight? Uh, well, again, I do want to thank our presenters tonight for putting together this information and sharing it with the public. Um, and I and we said this Saturday, but for all of the work that's on behind the scenes by all of our staff, for getting this budget information together and then, you know, being able to share this level of detail to the town, as you've heard from both people tonight, it makes a huge difference in being able to share how such a big amount of the Situate taxpayer dollars goes, you know, right back into the education. So um, it has definitely been a, a great experience, at least over the past couple of years compared to uh many years ago. Um, so there's nothing else uh from the committee. The, our next meeting is on February 28th. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn at seven thirty six.
Uh, so moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, through a roll call vote, uh, long, yes, uh, Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Ms. Limblon?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Frangelini?
Yes.
And Dr. Burkowski?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great rest of your night and a great school vacation.